Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the October 28th Lebanon City Council Meeting. Our first order of business will be the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, move on to the roll call members. Madam Clerk, clear roll, please.
Yes. Mike Kincaid, absent. Keith Campbell.
Here.
Sandra Jasonowski.
Here.
Dick Robertson.
Here.
John Copeland.
Here.
Sierra Messenger.
Present.
Robert Hawkins.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, move on to the minutes, please. Yep, and so we'll move on to the approval of the minutes for our previous meeting, October 15th. Are there any changes to those minutes? Okay, entertain a motion to approve.
Make a motion when you approve the minutes, please.
Motion approves, our second. Second from Keith, all fair side.
Aye.
All right, these minutes are approved. All right, move on to old business. First item up here, I have resolution 21 or 2024-19, small purchase, Kevin, is that still tabled?
Yeah, if you wouldn't mind if we could keep that on the table, we're still working with legal on that.
Just want to double check. Yep. All right. All right, next up will be ordinance 2024-16, which is the salary ordinance, part of our city 2025 city budget. Tanya. So we have to amend, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
So before I start this, I read the this ordinance at our last meeting, and there have been a couple of changes to the council and the audience. Our stormwater employees, their salaries didn't get increased. So with with that, there will be.
It just got, we planned for it, we just didn't get corrected on the in the ordinance, just to clarify. It's still reflects what we talked about at our budget workshops.
Yes, there's no change. It just matches the Parks Department, the DPW report that we had for their starting salaries. So I'm going to read that, but it is going to be different than it was last time when I read it.
Can we, can you talk about the highlight the change and then maybe make a motion to amend it? Is that okay with council? Again, like I said, this is reflecting, it was a correction in the in the ordinance.
Yeah, okay. Do that when I get there or right now, just separately?
Do now, so then we can, so we can read it as amended.
Okay. So there were, under the stormwater, there were three texts, and the original number was 135,000, and it is now 155,742, which is a, their their new salary is 51,514 times three employees. So that's the change there. And then the MS Coordinator Inspector was at the old rate of 78.5, and it should have been 80,000. So those are the only two changes. So the total was 537,409. The new total is 559,651. So that is those changes. Do we want to go ahead and amend that?
Is there any questions on that from council? We understand motion then to amend ordinance 2024-16 as presented?
I'll make a motion when we approve the salary amendment as presented.
Motion is our second. Second from Keith, all fair side.
Aye.
Disposed. All right, that's now amended. All right, now we can touch on the ordinance as amended.
Thank you. Okay. Be it ordained by the common council of the city of Lebanon, the following statement of salaries is the base pay for positions listed. The full-time civilian employees of the city receive longevity pay at the rate of $75 per year of service. Longevity pay begins after the first full year of service and does not include the current year of service when calculating the amount for each employee. The public safety longevity is schedule is .0075% of a first-class firefighter slash patrolman salary and shall be capped at 25 years. All first-class firefighter patrolmen with five years of service or less will remain on the civilian longevity schedule until their sixth year of service. That also section four, that if a current employee transfers to a vacated position, the amount of the salary would be no more than the amount listed in said ordinance, plus the longevity of the employee transferring to the vacancy. Salaries and for the following employees of the city of Lebanon begin January 1st, 2025, and they are as follows. Department of Public Works, 721,072. Parks Department, 1,161,737. These two departments for the above rates are a 35 to 40-hour work week. However, when extreme emergencies arise requiring the above employees to work more than 40 hours a week as intended, they shall be compensated according to the Federal Labor Standards Act and the city's overtime policy. This section shall not apply to department heads. And then we move on to the Planning Department at 802,200. Historic Commission is $6,000. Police Department is 3,147,457. Fire Department is 2,608,060. The Clerk Treasurers Office is 309,582. The Mayor's Office, 137,148. Community Development is 100,920. Engineering Department is 166,765. Lit Public Safety for Fire is 1,090,260. Lit Public Safety for Police is 960,926. City Court is 10,500. Stormwater with the amended changes is 559,651. The annual salaries of the following council members shall be 85,000. The annual salaries of the Board of Works shall be 3,600. The annual salaries of the following board's members shall be Plan Commission, 9,600. Board of Zoning Appeals, 6,000. Park Board, 3,600. Plan Commission, zoning, and Park Board members are only compensated for regularly scheduled meetings that they attend. This ordinance will take effect January 1st, 2025, after it's adopted this evening.
Thank you, Tanya. Any questions, comments from council? Any public comment concerning ordinance 2024-16? Okay, seeing none, we entertain a motion to approve ordinance 2024-16 as amended. Sixteen.
Sixteen, sorry.
You're good. But motions are second. Second from Rob, all fair side.
Aye.
Disposed. That is approved. All right, next will be ordinance 2024-17, salaries of elected officials. This is also on second reading.
Ordinance fixing the salaries of elected officials of the city of Lebanon beginning January 1st, 2025. Be it ordained by the common council that two-thirds of its members being present concurring therein, maximum salaries of the following elected officials of the city of Lebanon beginning January 1st, 2025. Mayor, 73,671. Clerk Treasurer, 78,582. Common Council, 85,000. In addition to the funds paid by the Lebanon Civil City as set out in Section 2, the following elected and appointed officers are to be paid from funds of the municipal utilities are as follows. Mayor, 35,673. Clerk Treasurer, 20,450. Deputy Clerk Treasurer, 31,500. That's the end of this ordinance reading.
Thank you, Tanya. Any further questions, comments from council on that? Any public comment? Okay, seeing none, we entertain a motion then to approve ordinance 2024-17.
Should we accept or pass ordinance 2024-17?
We have motions, there are second. Second from Rob, all fair side.
Aye.
Disposed. That ordinance is approved in council. All right, and finally here, not finally here, but on the budget-related ones, ordinance 2024-18, which is our 2025 city budget, this is on second reading.
Ordinance 2024-18, be it ordained by the Lebanon City Council that the expense, that for the expenses of the Lebanon Civil City for the year ending December 31st, 2025, the sums herein specified are appropriated and ordered set apart out of several funds named for the purpose herein specified, subject to the laws governing the same. Such sums herein appropriated shall be held to include all expenditures authorized to be made during the year unless otherwise expressly stipulated and provided for by law. In addition, for the purposes of raising the revenue to meet the necessary expenses of the Lebanon Civil City, the property tax levies and the property tax rates, as herein specified, are included. Budget Form 4B, which is what I'm reading, for funds must be completed and submitted in the manner prescribed by the Department of Local Government and Finance. So here are the fund names and the adopted budget amounts. Casino River Boat is 93,000. The General Fund is 15,443,897. Debt Service is 145,942. Debt Payment is 1,750,000. Bond Number 3 is 372,47. Bond Number 5 is 435,350. Fire Pension is 322,410. Police Pension, 196,735. Local Road and Street, 331,719. Motor Vehicle Highway or DPW is 1,077,928. Park and Recreation, 1,720,512. Park Bond, 384,932. Cumulative Capital Improvements is 25,758. Cumulative Capital Development is 931,394. Stormwater Bond is 501,593. Sanitation is 1,7749. Those funds are all okay by the Department of Local Government Finance. These that I'm reading now are home-ruled funds, not reviewed by DLGF. Food and Beverage is 1.7 million. Public Safety Lit for both Police and Fire is 3,571,716. American Rescue Plan is 439,444. Park Non-Reverting is 100,000. Police Continued Ed is 68,000. Sidewalk Non-Reverting, the 50-50 Plan, is 5,000. Code Enforcement Non-Reverting, 7,000. MVH Restricted is 352,404. Planning and Zoning Non-Reverting is 350,000. Fire Fund Non-Reverting is 52,000. Fire Training Fund is 4,000. And Parks Miscellaneous Fund is 12,000. That is the end of the budget ordinance.
Do you have the totals?
It's a good question.
I thought I saw in bold, at least on the first page.
Ones that are reviewed by the Department of Local Government Finance are 24,740,966. And, let me get them separated, the home-ruled funds are 6,661,564.
Thank you, Tanya.
Yeah.
Any comments, discussion from council on that? Any public comment concerning the 2025 city budget? Okay, seeing none, we entertain a motion then concerning ordinance 2024-18.
Make a motion that we approve ordinance 2024-18.
Motion approves, there are second. Second from Dick, all fair side.
Aye.
Disposed. That's approved. Just before we move on, just want to, again, stress appreciation for council. Obviously, a lot of things flying around this year on our city budget, and appreciate all the hard work to put that together. And I know it's probably the biggest vote we actually take every year and usually get the least amount of comment, but it's a lot of hard work goes into that. So I appreciate all the hard work and time we all spent crafting it together to set a plan and vision for the for the city and frankly, also invest in our our biggest asset, which is our employees. So I appreciate the partnership we've had crafting that. So thanks again. All right, next up will be ordinance 2024-19. These are concerning the general obligation bonds, this is on second reading. Rob?
Thank you, Mayor. Council, again, as we discussed at the last meeting, this ordinance is for providing funds to pay the cost of certain capital improvements within the city and related expenses in connection therewith. So ordinance 2024-19, again, whereas this council now determines it's necessary in a proper exercise of the powers of the city to finance all or a portion of the cost of the construction, acquisition, installation, and equipping, certain capital improvements within the city, including but not limited to streetscaping and street lighting improvements, all and all related expenses, including the cost of issuance, and that's all defined as the project. As we discussed, again, the city's obtained estimates of the cost of the project will advertise for, receive bids for the project. Which bids will be subject to the city obtaining funds to pay for the project, and based upon the estimates, the cost of the project, it is going not to exceed 1,500,000. Council finds that it does not have sufficient funds available in the existing budget, which may be applied for the cost of this project. So the council deems it advisable to authorize issuance, the general obligation bonds in amount not to exceed 1,500,000, again, for the purpose of procuring funds to be applied to pay for all or a portion of the cost of the projects. Again, we had a public hearing at the last meeting. There are several pages in this ordinance. I'll just highlight those for, since you've been through it before. Section 1, again, talks about the determination to proceed the declaration of intent and the authorization and details of the bonds. We go back several pages to page 7, which we get in the section 2, the form of the bonds. Section 3 discusses the sale of the bonds, the preparation of the bonds, some legal terms dealing with defeasance, deposits, and application of the bond proceeds, covenant to levy a tax and bond payment fund, tax covenants and representations. And then it takes us all, again, that the debt limit will not be exceeded. And again, this was, or will be, an additional appropriation, again, which we had a public hearing at the last meeting, and the effective date of the ordinance shall be from and after its adoptions, and any procedures required by law.
Thank you, Rob. This is a reminder for council, this is to essentially fund several kind of street lighting projects around towns, trying to make some investments in neighborhoods that we feel like could use some better lighting. Certainly, we feel that from a public safety standpoint, that some street lighting could assist with that. And so the goal is to use these these funds to to make those investments around the city. Any further questions, comments, concerns from council? Any public comment concerning ordinance 2024-19?
Okay, entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion when we approve ordinance 2024-19, GL Bonds.
We have a motion approved, there are second. Motion a second from Keith, all fair side.
Aye.
Disposed. All right, that is approved. Thank you, council. All right, that concludes what I have for old business. Anything from council? Okay, new business then. Fortunately, I received a text message this afternoon on item A. Unfortunately, the presenter has a urgent medical issue or emergency, so they will not be able to present tonight. So we're going to table item A, and we'll take that up at our next meeting. The next item will be a food and beverage request for the YMCA Veterans Day event. Sarah, represent for the YMCA here.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Dee Hood. I am the Chair of the With Them Family YMCA Board of Advisors, and I'm here requesting $1,500 from the Beverage, the Food and Beverage Act or Fund Act. That's a social studies teacher in me, sorry. What we will be doing, and as we've done for several years, Friday, November 8th, we'll be handing out free box lunches to veterans and their families, and we're looking to help offset those costs. We sent out asking for different restaurants, et cetera, to provide a cost for us. The lowest was with On the Go Catering, $13 a meal. We plan, in the past, we have served about 100 veterans and their families. And then $200 of that 1,500 would go towards marketing flyers and postcards. So if you guys have any questions, I will do my best to answer those.
Questions or Sarah?
Yeah.
The Food and Beverage Committee met recently with them, and they did a great presentation on the fantastic job they do feeding the veterans. They usually do it the day before, so that way it gives veterans another option for, you know, being celebrated and obtaining a meal. They also have military coins that they kind of shift around, and they get boxes, gratitude boxes as well. So it's not just food, but they do come away with a little bit of a box with some fun things in there. Veterans and their families are allowed to come through, and it's typically about an hour. And the Food and Beverage Committee gave a positive recommendation.
Thank you, Sarah. Any further questions, comments from council? Is there a motion? For how much? We have a motion. Is there a second?
Okay.
Second from Rob, all fair side.
Aye.
Disposed. That was a yes, right? That wasn't opposed? Okay, just want to make sure it was, all in favor, we're good. All right, that's approved. Thank you so much.
Thank you for everything you guys do for that.
We just need a letter in our office. You can send it to me or whatever, just asking for those funds, and then we send it to you. I think they will. Find her.
All right, next, another quick one here, if council doesn't mind. We have a discussion about additional street lighting, funding operation on Anderson Lane. Kevin Krielik?
Thank you so much. As many of you know, we've done some improvements on Anderson Lane, and some of the comments we've received were related to the need for additional street lighting. So this item was also on the agenda for the Board of Works earlier this evening, and they approved the placement of street lighting within the right-of-way. That is, that is their purview to look at the public rights of way throughout the city, but they do not have the fiduciary responsibilities that the council carries. So I'm bringing this before you for the funding of the streetlights. We have an agreement with Lebanon Utilities, so they will, these will be non-decorative sort of standard LED Cobra Head-style streetlights that would be installed on existing utility poles. And they install those at no cost to us for the installation or the equipment, but the city has an agreement with Lebanon Utilities that we pay $5.10 per month for the operation of those lights, for the electrical need of those lights. So we're proposing to install 11 108-watt LED streetlights along the existing poles on that street section between between 39 and Elm Swamp Road, and that cost will be $5.10 per month per light. So that's $56.10 per month that will, that the city will see a bill or an increase in the city's light bill that they already receive. So I'm bringing that before you just for approval for the operational expenses associated with additional streetlights. What questions can I answer?
So just for council's education here, so we typically pay this out of COET, I believe, is how we, we have, yeah, we have, we have a lighting line in our COET. There's a buffer in there too for things like this that come up, right? So we don't run that to zero every single year. So we can handle the additional costs associated with these lights within our current budget. We need to make changes for it. So seeing none, if there's any other concerns or questions with that.
I can motion we approve the increase in the street lighting for Anderson Lady, Anderson Lane.
Motion, motion seconds or further discussion? All fair side.
Aye.
Disposed. That's approved. Thank you, Kevin.
Kevin, before you leave, just a general question about that project. Are they going to be putting anything in the medians at all as far as decorative or anything? Was there anything planned for that?
There is some some decorative landscape rock. There's river rock that I believe got fully installed today, but nothing further, no, no, no further decorative treatments in the in the medians. The only thing really left to do on the project is the installation of some some small flexible reflective markers that will go along the the top of the new curb, just to further delineate the path for people that are in the corridor.
Have you seen that yet, Kevin? After they put the rock in?
I went by earlier today, and they were 90% done with the rock.
I'm just asked, does it look like river rock to you? Take a good look at it.
Okay. It looked smaller than I.
And that's my greatest rock to me that I've seen.
Okay, I'll take, I'll take a closer look, yeah.
And it may be okay.
I don't think it's bad.
But I will say it, river rock doesn't look real great when it first goes in because it's usually really muddy. It needs to be rained on.
But even, but it's not necessarily the, the color is the size. It's it's very small, I don't know, the N dot rock sizes like Dick probably does. But I, yeah, when we were talking, I thought we were going to have kind of more of the softball-sized balls versus the, you know, ping pong-sized balls.
Okay, okay, all right.
Yeah, take a look.
Okay, I'll take a look. Thank you.
I definitely would, I definitely want to recommend something, come up with some kind of plan to change the appearance a little bit of the medians. I don't know what we can do is I noticed that there's no, there's no dirt, so it's not like we could plant something underneath, you know, with the rocks on top. So I don't know, maybe we could brainstorm some things that might.
Of course, we did have discussions about this, certainly because of the treatment we use where we're putting the curb on top of the asphalt. It wasn't really a viable option for plant material. And there were discussions of, like, do we try to do some, like, art or something with that? But again, some of the feedback we received about doing the project was the concern about the cost. And so obviously, if we do more with it, that's more cost, certainly something we can explore. But we also looked at it, we can get it in, and then if we want to dress it up, we can always dress it up in the. and then if we want to dress it up, we can always dress it up in the future. We can, we could do the lights pretty easily and add those. That was kind of the main, that was probably the most feedback we heard, I'd say, that we could address. But certainly, I think it's something to consider. But again, we were just kind of trying to be sensitive with, with cost with it, too.
Oh, absolutely. I understand that.
And it's not that landscape material is completely inviable. Certainly, trees would not, would not grow there, but.
Leave some grass.
There could be some, some grasses or small shrubs or something. But, yeah, I, you know, I, I will leave that up to you guys and, and happy to execute whatever direction or vision you, you provide.
Do we do any, I, I like the bike lane. I like the color of the bike. I like it stands out.
It does.
You know, we know what.
It's a national, it's a national standard, that color.
We know that's a national standard for bike lane, but there may be some people that don't know what that is. So I'm wondering, do we, do we need to identify this as bike lane or something for them to understand bicycles?
Well, yeah, we will also have, there are some of those, there will be some bollards on the end of it that will, that will be installed that would also prevent anybody from trying to drive down it with anything larger than a bicycle. So I don't know if that's where you're, where you're going as well, but, or if you'd like us to look into additional signage, I'm happy to. We can, we can do that, too, just through our Public Works Department.
Just make people happy, you know, that they.
Sure.
Buying it, whatever.
Yeah, we can do that.
Bicycles, not, not golf carts.
Yes.
How was on that?
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
All right, we'll get into the meat of the meeting here tonight. Next item up will be ordinance 2024-32. This is ordinance establishing a water rate district and rates and charges for the use and services provided by the Water Works Utility to the Leap District. And this is on first reading. Utilities Attorney Jeff Jacob.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name is Jeff Jacob. I'm here as the attorney for Lebanon Utilities with Sandra Morgan. It's CFO Ryan Ottinger, the Water Waste Water Operations Manager, and Scott Miller from Baker Tilly, who will be doing the heavy lifting this evening. Before you tonight, as mayor indicated, we have a water district and rate ordinance is sort of the shorthand of how we refer to it. It's set for a public hearing at your next meeting on November 12th. Just briefly, there are two things that this ordinance does. First, it establishes and defines a, a leap district for water rate purposes. app that you have in your packets. Thank you. This map that you have in your packets defines in depiction and in legal descriptions, apologies for all of those. You can yell at somebody later on your agenda for that. But that defines in, in depiction what we're talking about for Leap Water Rate District purposes. And it's basically everything that you all have annexed to date and the items that I note that are on your agenda later referred to as Leap Annexation Phases 25 through 35. The second thing the ordinance does is it establishes the rates and charges for the Leap District only. And I think that's very important that I want people to hear is that it bifurcates and creates a separate rate district within the city, isolating Leap and Non-Leap is perhaps the best way to describe it. The ordinance contains some language that is very, very similar, if not identical, to our existing civil rate district ordinance. When we're talking about some of the non-recurring rates and charges, trip fees, hourly rates, and the like. There are two distinguishing items that I want to point out to you before passing this off to Scott Miller, who will address these in more detail. But we have the, the metered rate for the Leap District is different, and the availability fees for that area for the Leap Rate District are different as well. Now, again, the two points that I really want to drive home, one, this ordinance does not affect non-Leap ratepayers within the city of Lebanon. Okay, this is specific to the Leap Rate District, which you all will hopefully be establishing and creating an A. And then in that ordinance, we also define or by, by absence, the Lebanon Civil Rate District. Now, if you recall, a month or so ago, I was in front of you, and we talked about what I believe is somewhat of a historic occurrence for the city in the Lebanon Utility Service Board's approval of the water supply agreement, supplying 25 million gallons per day of water to the city of Lebanon over the course of the next several years. As you can imagine, there's quite an infrastructure cost bringing that water in from citizens to various connection points in and around the city. Lebanon Utility Service Board and its staff have worked very hard to protect the non-Leap ratepayers from that infrastructure cost. And this ordinance is part of that step and a culmination of isolating non-Leap ratepayers from those existing costs or those future infrastructure costs that you will see potentially later this year by the way of some other bond ordinances. Now, that is not to say that the non-Leap ratepayers will not experience benefit from the infrastructure and additional water supply. In fact, there will be additional redundancy and system upgrades that non-Leap ratepayers will benefit from. One additional note, and I will pass this off to Scott, the Lebanon Utility Service Board, as you'll note in its packet, approved Resolution 2024-10, which was a unanimous recommendation of the approval of the ordinance that you have before you this evening for, in second reading in, in a couple of weeks. So having said that, Scott, I will pass off to address how we came up with the recommended rate.
Thank you, Jeff. Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. My name is Scott Miller. I'm a CPA and a principal with Baker Tilly Municipal Advisors, and we are assisting Lebanon Utilities with the implementation of utility rates and charges for the Leap Water District, as well as the associated financings that will fund the various projects that are needed to provide the potable water to that area. As you likely know, the preliminary engineering report, or PER, for the water project was just recently published, and on the screen got a schedule of the estimated project costs for the water improvements, if I can get that all to fit. This is in the report that was distributed in your packet as well. The projects are going to be funded over a period of time and total about 200, just under $225 million over three different phases. These projects will be financed with the issuance of bonds through the Indiana State Revolving Fund. And the first series of bonds is anticipated to close before the end of this year, and that's why we're here before you tonight with the proposed rate ordinance for the Leap District. And then, as Jeff alluded to, we'll be back in some future meetings with bond ordinances as well. The second series of bonds is anticipated to close sometime late next year in 2025. And then the third and final phase is anticipated to close sometime in 2028. In addition to the bond funds that will be used to fund the projects, we also will be collecting availability fees just like we do in the civil portion of the system. So as customers locate in the Leap District, we will charge them a, an availability fee based on the number of equivalent dwelling units that they represent, meaning how much water they anticipate using. And then as those fees are collected, they'll be used to either reduce the size of an upcoming bond issue or used in later years to pay down outstanding principal on those bonds. That availability fee in the Leap District, as incorporated in the ordinance before you tonight, is $5,200 per EDU. And so that will, as I said, become a portion of the funding that goes into this project. So in addition to the availability fee, the ordinance also includes the monthly recurring charges for Leap that Jeff referenced.
And Scott, real quick, so the $5,200, that's higher than our current civil rate?
It is higher than the current availability fee. Your, your current fee right now is $4,700, I believe, for the civil district. So it is a little bit higher, but still within reason in terms of, of being a competitive fee that will be, you know, providing funds to pay for the project, but also not so high as to discourage any growth in the area. So in addition to that availability fee, then we also will have the recurring monthly rates and charges. And as Jeff alluded to, we have the, the rates incorporated in the ordinance tonight. What you see on the screen is a rate of $8 per 100 cubic feet for all water usage. And that rate is comprised of three different components. The first component is for capital, and the, the capital component of the rate will be used to pay principal and interest payments on not only the debt that Lebanon will be taking out through the SRF, but also Citizens, Citizens Energy Group. So they're doing projects to bring the water up to Lebanon. We're going to do projects to take that water around the city and up to the Leap District. And the capital component of that rate, along with other funds, will be used to make those principal and interest payments as they come due. Once the facilities are all constructed, Lebanon will be purchasing water on a wholesale basis from Citizens Energy Group. And that's where the second component of the rate comes in. That's the commodity rate, and that is simply the charge that citizens will bill to Lebanon for the amount of water that we purchase. And so that's just a straight pass through for the cost of the water itself. The third component, then, is to recover funds to pay for the additional operation, maintenance, and replacement costs that Lebanon will incur. Will have new facilities that will need to operate, maintain, and eventually replace. And so that third component will cover the costs associated with those activities. All three of those together then get us to that $8 per 100 cubic foot rate. You'll notice at $8 per 100 cubic, that is a flat rate, so all usage will be at that flat, flat rate instead of the declining block structure that the civil rate, our civil district has. This is going to be a flat rate for a variety of reasons. Number one, it's easier to administer. Number two, it better reflects the cost of the valuable resource that we're bringing up here. So we are going to implement that flat rate rather than a declining block structure. In addition to that, the ordinance also incorporates minimum charges for each of the different meter sizes that the utility installs. We don't really anticipate those being used much at all until possibly down the road when the mixed-use portion of the development is put in place, and we've got some residential customers out there. At that point, we might see minimums used. But by and large, most of the, the customers out there are going to be using so much water that the minimums aren't going to be applicable. But it's in there to mirror as closely as possible the, the civil rate ordinance. And then lastly, we also have the various non-recurring charges that Jeff referenced as well for trip fees and, and the various things that, that go into operating utility, as well as the fire protection rates as well. I should mention that the ordinance has rates in there for fire hydrants and automatic sprinklers out in the Leap District as well. So as Jeff mentioned, tonight is a first reading and introduction of the ordinance. We're looking to have a public hearing at the council's next meeting on November 12th. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have about the rate ordinance.
Questions for Scott from council? Do we, when this all gets layered in with the financing of the bonds, things like that, so I guess, can you talk a little bit more, a little bit how, how this has insulated current ratepayers from funding the Leap? Touch, touch more on that for us, please?
Yeah, ordinarily, if Lebanon Utilities was going to go to the state or to the open market to do another bond issue, all of the revenues that are currently existing and coming into the utility would be a pledge or a source of revenue to the repayment of those bonds. We've gone to great lengths, including the establishment of this separate district to segregate that out. So the revenues associated with the existing customers in the civil district will remain separate, will be able, as Lebanon Utilities, to go out and do other financings as needs arise in the civil district and, and deal with that separately. And then Leap will be set aside separately, and the, the documents that you'll be seeing here soon related to the bond ordinance and other financing documents will specifically carve out just revenues from the Leap District as repayment of the debt. And the way that will work is that the state is actually setting up a trust account where all of the funds for that, that Lebanon receives from the Leap District, availability fees will get deposited into that trust account. The capital component of the rate that I spoke about will get deposited into that trust account, and just those dollars will be used for the repayment of the debt. And that's, that will be all there is. And at that point, if it's not enough, then there'll be some additional backups that will come into play. IDD revenues from the Leap District, potentially TIF on certain projects. But there won't be any recourse for the state to come back to revenues from the civil district in Lebanon. Those will be completely walled off and separate.
So fair to say Leap is paying for Leap?
Leap is paying for Leap.
Are there questions, comments from council? Okay, thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Jeff, anything else you want to say?
No, thank you for your time, and we'll see you in two weeks.
Well, I should do the first reading for you, so. All right, good, Rob.
Thank you. Mayor, Council Ordinance 2024-32 establishes a water service rate district and rates and charges for the use and services provided by the Water Works Utility to the Leap District. And this is several pages, so I'll hit the highlights here for you as both Jeff and Scott address those in their presentation. So whereas the city owns, operates through its Utility Service Board a municipal water utility known as Lebanon Utilities, for the purposes of providing safe, reliable, and efficient water utility services, again, that's defined as the Water Works Systems, this council, based upon recommendations from the Utility Board, periodically evaluates and adjusts the fees and charges to ensure sufficient revenue to cover the expenses of the utility, including the maintenance and expansion of the Water Works Systems. The Indiana Economic Development Corporation, or the IEDC, has established the Leap District, which again consists of approximately 11,000 plus or minus acres of real property within, proximate to the city. The Leap District is defined in Exhibits A and B, and may be further amended and described appropriately by this council. The city previously established a water rate district under ordinance 2022-22 to ensure equitable distribution of cost for waters, water services among current users within the city. As Jeff indicated, that's defined as the civil water district. It is determined that the Leap District has distinct water infrastructure needs, which necessitates the establishment of a new rate district separate from the civil water district. In anticipation of the development of the Leap District, the city, through its Utility Board, again, approved a water supply agreement with the Board of Directors of Citizens, which provides its citizens, again, will supply the utility with up to 25 million gallons per day of wholesale water services to the city, including the Leap District. Whereas the Board has obtained an estimate cost from its engineering advisor for the construction and infrastructure necessary to receive the secondary source from citizens and service the Leap District. Whereas the Board has commissioned an analysis from its financial advisor, Baker Tilly, to determine in a reliable and efficient manner the appropriate rates and charges for the Leap District. That's described in the Baker Tilly Report. Based upon the Baker Tilly Report, the Board adopted, again, Resolution 2024-10, where it recommended to this council the creation of a new water rate district defined as the Leap Water District. Pursuant to the Act, this council may by ordinance establish just and equitable fees for the service rendered by the water utility. Utility has been exempted from the jurisdiction of the Indiana Utility Regulatory Commission. This ordinance is introduced pursuant to Indiana law. And a public hearing will be held again at the next meeting on November 12th. The council. The council finds that the rates and charges described herein are reasonable, nondiscriminatory, and just. The council also finds the rates and charges produce income sufficient to construct and maintain the utility property in a sound, physical, and financial condition to render adequate and efficient service to the LEAP district. Therefore, be it resolved as follows. Section 1 talks about a second water rate district, again, as established as the LEAP water district. The boundaries of the LEAP water district are set forth in Exhibits A and B. The existing water rate district, again governed by ordinance 2022-22, is known or shall be known as the civil water district rates. The LEAP water district shall also be governed by the City of Lebanon Utility General Terms and Conditions of Water Services. All future annexations of property in the corporate limits of the city shall designate which water rate district shall apply. Section 6 discusses the different rates, again, that Scott and Jeff presented, as well as the connection fees. It's several pages, the meters, all of which have been provided. Section 8 just addresses, again, the rates and charges set forth in this ordinance shall be reviewed every calendar year. And any portion that's in conflict with this ordinance is superseded to the extent inconsistent therewith. And this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption effective date in any publication required by law.
Thank you, Rob. Ordinance 2024-32 has been read on first reading. Is there any public comment this time concerning the ordinance? Okay, saying that, again, we'll take that up for our second reading and public hearing at our November 12th meeting. All right, next items, and these are next few are kind of all related. This is phase 25 through 35 of LEAP annexations, and these will be on first reading, so I'll turn this over to Ben.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, good evening. I'll quickly apologize for having the next 11 items on your agenda, so we'll hopefully get through these very efficiently for you. Similar to the last round of annexations we did just about a year ago, this round can best be described as filling in the holes on previous LEAP annexations. So what I thought I would do quickly here is give you a broad overview of all of the annexations in general terms, and then as we go into each one specifically and read the ordinance and hold the required public hearing, then I can pull up a separate map that's specific to that and explain the location for you. So just a quick broad overview, again, I said there are 11 different annexations this evening. If you're going to pull up the map, we can kind of show you the general locations of these. Just quickly, these are 100% voluntary annexations, similar to all previously annexations. And what that means is we did receive a petition for annexation from the current property owner to be annexed to the City of Lebanon. So all 100% voluntary annexations. They range in size from less than one acre to just short of 80 acres for each of one of these individual annexations, and they're all either one or two parcels. So they are very much filling in the holes on previously annexations. As all annexations, this is a multi-step process. The first step in the process is a plan commission, public hearing, and recommendation on the zoning district associated with each one of these annexations. Because these annexations are all located within the LEAP district area of the comprehensive plan, each of them comes with a unanimous recommendation to assign the LEAP district zoning classification to them, and you'll see that represented in each one of the annexation ordinances when we get to those readings. So again, you can kind of generally see here, just to orient you, State Road 32 runs right through the middle of this, east to west. There's the curve. So you have a handful of them north and a majority of them south of State Road 32. And then there is one lonely annexation up here on Whit Road, close to the Eli Lilly site that you see here, so.
Hey, Ben, just to clarify too, these numbers, these represent the phase number?
Yeah, these these are the phases, not the ordinance numbers. Yes, you'll see this is the phase 25 through 35 LEAP district annexations. These are not ordinance numbers.
Just wanted to clarify that for council.
Yep. So that's that's a quick overview of the annexation locations. Well, I thought I'd turn it over to Mr. Alexander, just to give you also a brief update on this as well, and then I can come back up, and we'll start with the first ordinance that is on your agenda this evening, and I'll pull up that map specific to that one for you.
And you said the public hearings are tonight as well?
Yes, yes, the public hearings were noticed for tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, council. Scott Alexander, I'm an attorney with TAF Law. I represent the Indiana Economic Development Corporation, or IEDC. I know there are some new faces among the the council, and so I thought I'd give a little bit of a background as to where we are with respect to the LEAP project. As of December of this year, IEDC will have purchased just under 6,100 acres. And that's closed and purchased on those those acres. And as of December, IEDC will have under contract about 1,500 additional acres that it will close on in the in the next two years. Most of them will be next year, in 2025. With respect to where we are today is where we thought we would be today. When we started this journey about two years ago, we anticipated that we would have approximately this many acres under contract, and that we would have end users that are coming in. And you've you've seen a couple of announcements, there will be more with respect to that. So with that, what we have done is we we wait for about 10 or so areas to annex in, so we don't just do it one at a time. This group of annexation is about 100 acres or so, and so these are generally newer properties that have been put under contract and purchased since about a year ago, when I was in front of the council for the last round of annexations. It won't be the last. We'll probably wait six, eight, 10 months again to do some more gap filling with respect to the LEAP district, but that's why we're here today. All of these properties were in the original confines of what was the concept plan for the LEAP district. As Ben said, the plan commission unanimously recommended that they be zoned as such, and I'm happy to answer any questions from the council.
Any questions for Scott at this time?
Thank you.
I forgot to ask other questions for Ben before we kind of start diving into it.
Right, and we waited just long enough for my computer to go to sleep, so I'll bring it back up here. And starting with ordinance number 24-20, which is the LEAP Phase 25 annexation area, and that's what you see represented on this map here, again, State Road, right on the curve on State Road 32. This is two parcels totaling just a little over four acres, and the addresses of the two parcels are 3255 and 3260 West State Road 32. Any questions about parcels or location before I turn it back over to the mayor and Rob for the reading of the ordinance?
Thank you, Mayor. Council, ordinance 2024-20 concerns the LEAP Phase 25 annexation. And again, as Ben indicated, these are all very similar format, so bear with me here. So whereas the owners of approximately 4.0 acres of land located in unincorporated Boone County but contiguous to the city, defined as LEAP Phase 25 annexation area, has petitioned to have its land voluntary annexed into the city. This council is legally authorized to annex lands that qualify for annexation as defined in Indiana Code, and is desirous of approving the annexation of the LEAP Phase 25 annexation area. The LEAP Phase 25 annexation area consists of two parcels, again totaling approximately 4.0 acres, owned by one landowner, not including adjacent public roadways, and they're more particularly described in Exhibits A and B. Council finds that 100% of the landowners comprising the LEAP Phase 25 annexation area have signed and filed a voluntary annexation petition with this council. The LEAP Phase 25 annexation area does not include any parcel of land for which its owners have not filed an express written consent to this annexation. Whereas as authorized by the city's Unified Development Ordinance, this council has received and considered a development proposal concept plan which provides sufficient information about the intended development and use of the LEAP Phase 25 annexation area to justify the assignment of the LEAP district zoning classification to the annexed area. Again, the Lebanon Advisory Plan Commission met on October 24, 2024, and forwarded docket 24-38 to this council with a favorable recommendation by a vote of seven to zero to assign the LEAP district zoning classification to this LEAP Phase 25 annexation area. In accordance with Indiana law, on October 28, 2024, this council will hold a public hearing regarding the petition. The council will adopt a fiscal plan for the annexation of the LEAP Phase 25 annexation area. The council has determined after due consideration that this annexation satisfies the contingency requirements under Indiana law as described in Exhibit C. Therefore, be it resolved, the council finds as follows, that the foregoing recitals are found to be accurate and incorporated by reference. The LEAP Phase 25 annexation area depicted in Exhibits A and B is eligible for annexation into the city and is declared annexed into in a part of the City of Lebanon. The LEAP Phase 25 annexation area meets the contingency requirements for annexation under Indiana law. The LEAP annexation area is assigned council District 2. Upon recommendation of the plan commission, the LEAP zoning district zoning classification is assigned to LEAP Phase 25 annexation area. The council declares that upon annexation, the LEAP Phase 25 annexation area shall be a part of the water and wastewater LEAP rate district as enacted in ordinance 2024-32. The City of Lebanon Utilities shall update its LEAP rate district maps to reflect the same. And this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon adoption by this council and as required by Indiana law.
Thank you, Rob. At this time, I'll open the public hearing on ordinance 2024-20. If you have a comment, please come forward, state your name for the record, and keep comments at three minutes if possible. Saying none, I will close the public hearing on ordinance 2024-20. We will take that up for second reading at our next meeting, which will be November 12th. All right, next ordinance up, 2024-21.
All right, ordinance 2024-21 is the LEAP Phase 26 annexation that you will see represented here on the screen. It is a single parcel annexation, again, State Road 32 is just east of the parcel that you see here. This annexation is approximately three acres, and the address of this annexation is 662 North 300 West.
Thank you, Ben. Questions?
Thank you, Mayor. Council, ordinance 2024-21 is the Phase 26 annexation. Whereas the owners of approximately three acres of land in unincorporated Boone County but contiguous to the city, it's defined as LEAP Phase 26 annexation area, has petitioned to have its land voluntary annexed into the city. LEAP Phase 26 annexation area, again, consists of two parcels totaling approximately three acres, but owned by one landowner, not including adjacent public roadways, and that's more particularly described in Exhibits A and B. The council finds that 100% of the landowners comprising the LEAP Phase 26 annexation area have signed and filed a voluntary annexation petition with this council. As authorized by the city's Unified Development Ordinance, the council has received and considered a development proposal concept plan which provides sufficient information about the intended development and use of the LEAP Phase 26 annexation area to justify the assignment of the LEAP district zoning classification. The Lebanon Advisory Plan Commission met on October 21, 2024, forwarded docket 24-39 to this council with a favorable recommendation by a vote of seven to zero to assign the LEAP district zoning classification to the LEAP Phase 26 annexation area. In accordance with Indiana law, on October 28, this council shall hold a public hearing. The council shall adopt a fiscal plan. The council has determined after due consideration that this annexation satisfies the contingency requirements under Indiana law as described in Exhibit C. Therefore, be it resolved, this council finds as follows, again, the recitals are found to be accurate and incorporated by reference. The LEAP Phase 26 annexation area described in Exhibits A and B are eligible for annexation in the city and declared annexed into in a part of the City of Lebanon. The LEAP Phase 26 annexation area meets the contingency requirements under Indiana law. The LEAP annexation area is hereby assigned council District 2. Upon the recommendation of the plan commission, the LEAP district zoning classification is assigned for the LEAP Phase 26 annexation area. And again, this annexation area shall be a part of the water and wastewater LEAP rate districts as enacted in ordinance 2024-32, and the effective date shall be in full force effects upon adoption by this council and as required by Indiana law.
Thank you, Rob. At this time, we'll open the public hearing on ordinance 2024-21. If you do have a comment, please come forward, state your name for the record, and keep comments at three minutes if possible. Saying none, I will close the public hearing on ordinance 2024-21. We'll take it up at our next meeting. You guessed it, November 12th, 7:15 p.m. Next. Ordinance 2024-22, sorry.
Ordinance 2024-2022, excuse me, got too many numbers in there, is the LEAP Phase 27 annexation that you see represented here on the map. Again, State Road 32 is just to the south here. This is a single parcel annexation that is approximately five acres, and the address is 750 North 250 West.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, ordinance 2024-22, again, is the Phase 27 annexation. Whereas approximately five acres of land are located in unincorporated Boone County but contiguous to the city, again defined as the LEAP Phase 27 annexation area, has petitioned to have its land voluntary annexed into the city. The LEAP Phase 27 annexation area consists of one parcel totaling approximately five acres, including, not including the adjacent public roadways, and that is described in Exhibits A and B. The council finds that 100% of the landowners comprising the LEAP Phase 27 annexation area have signed and filed a voluntary annexation petition with this council. The Lebanon Advisory Plan Commission met on October 21, 2024, and forwarded docket 24-40 to this council with a favorable recommendation by a vote of seven to zero to assign the LEAP district zoning classification for this annexation area. In accordance with Indiana law, this council shall hold a public hearing on October 28, 2024. The council shall adopt a fiscal plan in accordance with Indiana law, and the council has determined after due consideration that this annexation satisfies the contingency requirements under Indiana law and is particularly described in Exhibit C. Therefore, be it resolved, this council finds as follows, again, the foregoing recitals are incorporated by reference. The Phase 27 annexation area described in Exhibits A and B are eligible for annexation into the city and declared annexed into in a part of the City of Lebanon. The LEAP Phase 27 annexation area meets the contingency requirements under Indiana law. The LEAP annexation area is assigned council District 3, and the zoning shall be the LEAP district zoning classification. The council declares upon annexation, the LEAP Phase 27 annexation shall be a part of the water and wastewater LEAP rate districts as enacted in ordinance 2024-32, and this ordinance shall be in a full force and effect upon its adoption by this council and is required by Indiana law.
Thank you, Rob. Any questions for council? Okay. This time then, I'll open the public hearing on ordinance 2024-22. If you have a comment, please come forward, state your name for the record, and keep comments at three minutes if possible. Saying none, I'll close the public hearing on ordinance 2024-22. We'll take that up at our next council meeting on November 12th. All right, next will be ordinance 2024-23, LEAP Phase 28.
Thank you. The LEAP Phase 28 annexation, you'll see represented on the map here. This is on 25 North, and then this is 400 West, just a little bit, it's a little bit east here. This is a single parcel annexation. It's approximately two acres in size, and the address is 3620 West 25 North.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, ordinance 2024-23 is defined as the Phase 28 annexation. Again, whereas the owners of approximately two acres Again, whereas the owners of approximately two acres of land located in unincorporated Boone County, but contiguous to the city, defined as the LEAP Phase 28 annexation area, has petitioned to have its land voluntary annexed into the city of Lebanon. The LEAP Phase 28 annexation area again consists of approximately two acres described in Exhibits A and B. The council finds that 100% of the landowners comprising this LEAP Phase 28 annexation area have signed and filed a voluntary annexation petition with this council. The city of Lebanon Advisory Plan Commission met on October 21, 2024 and forwarded docket 24-41 to this council with a favorable recommendation by a vote of seven to zero to assign the LEAP district zoning classification for the LEAP Phase 28 annexation area. In accordance with Indiana law, on this date, October 28, this council shall hold a public hearing. This council shall adopt a fiscal plan in accordance with Indiana law, and this council has determined that this annexation satisfies the contiguity requirements under Indiana law and is described in Exhibit C. Therefore, be it resolved, the council finds as follows: Again, the foregoing recitals are found to be accurate and incorporated by reference. The LEAP Phase 28 annexation area described in Exhibits A and B is eligible for annexation into the city and is declared annexed into and a part of the city. The LEAP Phase 28 annexation area meets the contiguity requirements under Indiana law. The LEAP annexation area is assigned Council District Two, and upon recommendation of the Plan Commission, the LEAP district zoning classification is assigned to this annexation area. The council declares upon annexation that the LEAP Phase 28 annexation area shall be a part of the water and wastewater LEAP rate districts as enacted in Ordinance 2024-32. And again, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon adoption by this council and is required by Indiana law.
Thank you, Rob. Questions from council? This time then, I'll open the public hearing on Ordinance 2024-23. If you have a comment, please come forward, state your name for the record, and keep comments at three minutes if possible. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing on Ordinance 2024-23. We'll take that up at our next meeting, November 12, at 7:15 p.m. All right, next will be ordinance 2024-24.
All right, ordinance 2024-24 is the LEAP Phase 29 annexation that you'll see represented on the map here. This is a property located on South 300 West, and we're south of State Road 32. This is about 0.67 acres. Again, a single parcel annexation. The address is 40 South 300 West.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Ordinance 2024-24 is the LEAP Phase 29 annexation. The owners of approximately 0.67 acres of land in unincorporated Boone County, but contiguous to the city, defined again as LEAP Phase 29 annexation area, have petitioned to have its land voluntary annexed into the city. The LEAP Phase 29 annexation area consists of 0.67 acres described in Exhibits A and B. This council finds that 100% of the landowners comprising this annexation area have signed and filed a voluntary annexation petition with this council. City Lebanon Advisory Plan Commission met on October 21, 2024, forwarded docket 24-42 to this council with a favorable recommendation by a vote of seven to zero to assign the LEAP district zoning classification for this annexation area. In accordance with Indiana law, this council shall hold a public hearing on this date, October 28, 2024. The council shall adopt a fiscal plan in accordance with Indiana law, and the council has determined that this annexation satisfies the contiguity requirements under Indiana laws described more particularly in Exhibit C. Therefore, be it resolved, this council finds, again as follows: The foregoing recitals are found to be accurate and incorporated by reference. The LEAP Phase 29 annexation area described in Exhibits A and B is eligible for annexation into the city and declared annexed into and a part of the city. The LEAP Phase 29 annexation area meets the contiguity requirements for annexation under Indiana law. This area shall be assigned Council District Two. Upon recommendation of the Plan Commission, the LEAP district zoning classification is assigned for this Phase 29, LEAP Phase 29 annexation area. And the council declares upon annexation, the LEAP Phase 29 annexation area shall be a part of the water and wastewater LEAP rate district as enacted in Ordinance 2024-32. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon adoption by this council and under Indiana law.
Thank you, Rob. This time, I'll open the public hearing on Ordinance 2024-24. If you have a comment, please come forward, state your name for the record, and keep comments at three minutes if possible. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing on Ordinance 2024-24. We'll take that up for our next reading on November 12 at 7:15 p.m. All right, next will be ordinance 2024-25, LEAP Phase 30.
All right, LEAP Phase 30 annexation you will see represented here on the screen. That's on North 250 West. It is a single parcel annexation that is approximately two acres in size, and the address of this parcel is 1195 North 250 West.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Ordinance 2024-25 again concerns LEAP Phase 30 annexation. Whereas the owners of approximately two acres of land in unincorporated Boone County, but contiguous to the city, again defined as LEAP Phase 30 annexation area, has petitioned to have its land voluntary annexed into the city. The LEAP Phase 30 annexation area again consists of one parcel totaling two acres, described more particularly in Exhibits A and B. Council finds 100% of the landowners comprising the LEAP Phase 30 annexation area have signed, filed a voluntary annexation petition with this council. The city Lebanon Advisory Plan Commission met on October 21, 2024, forwarded docket 24-43 to this council with a favorable recommendation by a vote of seven to zero to assign the LEAP district zoning classification for the LEAP Phase 30 annexation area. In accordance with Indiana law, this council shall hold a public hearing on this date, October 28, 2024. This council shall adopt a fiscal plan in accordance with Indiana law. This council has determined that this annexation satisfies the contiguity requirements under Indiana law and is more particularly described in Exhibit C. Therefore, be it resolved, again, this council finds as follows that the foregoing recitals are found to be accurate and incorporated by reference. The LEAP Phase 30 annexation area described in Exhibits A and B is eligible for annexation into the city and is declared to be annexed into and a part of the city. The LEAP Phase 30 annexation area meets the contiguity requirements under Indiana law. The LEAP annexation area for this area is assigned Council District Three. Again, upon recommendation of the Plan Commission, the LEAP district zoning classification is assigned for the LEAP Phase 30 annexation area. The council declares upon annexation, the LEAP Phase 30 annexation shall be a part of the water and wastewater LEAP rate district as enacted in Ordinance 2024-32. Again, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect by adoption by this council and is required by Indiana law.
Thank you, Rob. At this time then, I'll open the public hearing on Ordinance 2024-25. If you have any public comment, please come forward, state your name for the record, and keep comments at three minutes if possible. Seeing none of movement, I will close the public hearing on Ordinance 2024-25. We'll take that up at our next meeting, November 12 at 7:15 p.m. All right, next will be ordinance 2024-26. This is Phase 31.
All right, the LEAP Phase 31 annexation you'll see represented here on the screen. This, again, this is State Road 32 right before the curve as you're heading out west. This is, again, is a single parcel annexation, approximately 1.13 acres in size. The address is 2517 West State Road 32.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Ordinance 2024-26 again concerns the LEAP Phase 31 annexation. Whereas the owners of approximately 1.13 acres of land located in unincorporated Boone County, but contiguous to the city, has petitioned to have its land voluntary annexed into the city. Whereas the LEAP Phase 31 annexation area again consists of one parcel totaling 1.13 acres, all more particularly described in Exhibits A and B. The council finds that 100% of the landowners comprising this LEAP Phase 31 annexation area have signed and filed a voluntary annexation petition with this council. The city Lebanon Advisory Plan Commission met on October 21, 2024 and forwarded docket 24-44 to this council with a favorable recommendation by a vote of seven to zero to assign the LEAP district zoning classification for the LEAP Phase 31 annexation area. In accordance with Indiana law, on this date, October 28, 2024, this council shall hold a public hearing. This council shall adopt a fiscal plan in accordance with Indiana law, and this council has determined that this annexation satisfies the contiguity requirements under Indiana law and is described more particularly in Exhibit C. Therefore, be it resolved, this council finds as follows: Again, the foregoing recitals are found to be accurate and incorporated by reference. The LEAP Phase 31 annexation area described in Exhibits A and B is hereby declared to be annexed into and a part of the city of Lebanon. The LEAP Phase 31 annexation area satisfies the contiguity requirements under Indiana law. The LEAP annexation area is assigned Council District Two. And upon recommendation of the Plan Commission, the LEAP district zoning classification is assigned for the LEAP Phase 31 annexation area. Again, this council declares upon annexation that the LEAP Phase 31 annexation area shall be a part of the water wastewater LEAP rate districts as enacted in Ordinance 2024-32. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon adoption by this council and is required by Indiana law.
Thank you, Rob. At this time, I'll open the public hearing on Ordinance 2024-26. If you have any public comments, please come forward, state your name for the record, and keep comments at three minutes if possible. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing on Ordinance 2024-26. We'll take that up on second reading at our next meeting, November 12. All right, next will be ordinance 2024-27. This is Phase 32.
All right, LEAP Phase 32 annexation you will see represented on the map here. This is our one lone parcel that's up on the north side of town. For reference, Interstate 65, and then here's 300 north to the south. Again, this is a single parcel annexation of approximately one acre that is located here on North 150 West. The address is 3338 North 150 West.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Ordinance 2024-27 again concerns the LEAP Phase 32 annexation. Whereas the owners of approximately one acre of land located in unincorporated Boone County, but contiguous to the city, defined as the LEAP Phase 32 annexation area, has petitioned to have its land voluntary annexed into the city. The LEAP Phase 32 annexation area again consists of one parcel totaling approximately one acre, as more particularly described in Exhibits A and B. The council finds that 100% of the landowners comprising this LEAP Phase 32 annexation area have signed and filed a voluntary annexation petition with this council. The city Lebanon Advisory Plan Commission met on October 21, 2024 and forwarded docket 24-45 to this council with a favorable recommendation by a vote of seven to zero to assign the LEAP district zoning classification for this LEAP Phase 32 annexation area. In accordance with Indiana law, on this date, October 28, 2024, this council shall hold a public hearing. This council shall adopt a fiscal plan in accordance with Indiana law, and this council has determined that this annexation satisfies contiguity requirements under Indiana law as more particularly described in Exhibit C. Therefore, this council finds, again as follows, that the foregoing recitals are found to be accurate and incorporated by reference. The LEAP Phase 32 annexation area described in Exhibits A and B are hereby declared annexed into and a part of the city of Lebanon. The LEAP Phase 32 annexation area meets the contiguity requirements under Indiana law. The LEAP annexation area is assigned this Council District Three. And upon recommendation of the Plan Commission, the LEAP district zoning classification is assigned for the LEAP Phase 32 annexation area. The council declares upon annexation, the LEAP Phase 32 annexation area shall be a part of the water wastewater LEAP rate districts as enacted in Ordinance 2024-32. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon adoption by this council and is required by Indiana law.
Thank you, Rob. At this time, I'll open the public hearing on Ordinance 2024-27. If you have a comment, please come forward, state your name for the record, and keep comments at three minutes if possible. Okay. At this time, seeing none, I will close the public hearing on Ordinance 2024-27. We'll take that up at our next meeting, November 12 at 7:15 p.m. All right, just three left, guys. Next will be ordinance 2024-28, LEAP Phase 33.
All right, LEAP Phase 33 annexation. If I can pull the map up again, show you where this is located. We're going back south again. We're actually south of State Road 32 towards the south end of the LEAP district. Again, this is a single parcel annexation you see represented here, approximately two acres in size. It's located on West 50 South. The address is 2530 West 50 South.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Ordinance 2024-28 is the LEAP Phase 33 annexation. Whereas the owners of approximately two acres of land located in unincorporated Boone County, but contiguous to the city, has petitioned to have its land voluntary annexed into the city. The LEAP Phase 33 annexation area is more particularly described in Exhibits A and B. This council finds that 100% of the landowners comprising the LEAP Phase 33 annexation area have signed and filed a voluntary annexation petition with this council. City Lebanon Advisory Plan Commission met on October 21, 2024 and forwarded docket 24-46 to this council with a favorable recommendation by a vote of seven to zero to assign the LEAP district zoning classification for this LEAP Phase 33 annexation area. In accordance with Indiana law, on this date, October 28, 2024, this council shall hold a public hearing. This council shall adopt a fiscal plan in accordance with Indiana law, and this council has determined that this annexation satisfies the contiguity requirements under Indiana law and is more particularly described in Exhibit C. Therefore, be it resolved, this council finds, again as follows, that the foregoing recitals are found to be accurate and incorporated by reference. The LEAP Phase 33 annexation area described in Exhibits A and B are hereby declared annexed into and a part of the city of Lebanon. The LEAP Phase 33 annexation area meets the contiguity requirements under Indiana law. The LEAP annexation area is assigned Council District Two, and upon the recommendation of the Plan Commission, the LEAP district zoning classification is assigned for this LEAP Phase 33 annexation area. The council declares upon annexation that the LEAP Phase 33 annexation area shall be a part of the water and wastewater LEAP rate district as enacted in Ordinance 2024-32. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption by this council and is required by Indiana law.
Okay, with that, I will open the public hearing on Ordinance 2024-28. If you have a comment, please come forward, state your name for the record, and keep comments at two, three minutes if possible. Seeing no sign of movements, I will close the public hearing on Ordinance 2024-28. We'll take that up at our next meeting, November 12 at 7:15 p.m. All right, next will be ordinance 2024-29. This is LEAP Phase 34.
All right, we're on the home stretch here, only two more. LEAP Phase 34 annexation you'll see represented on the map here. We're back down on the southwest side of the LEAP district. This is a two parcel annexation you see represented here highlighted in yellow. It's approximately 5.36 acres. This is on South 400 West. The addresses of the two parcels are 95 and 175 South 400 West. Again, it's the LEAP Phase 34 annexation.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Ordinance 2024-29 is the LEAP Phase 34 annexation. Whereas the owners of approximately 5.36 acres of land located in unincorporated Boone County, but contiguous to the city, defined as the LEAP Phase 34 annexation area, have petitioned to have its land voluntary annexed into the city. The LEAP Phase 34 annexation area consists of two parcels totaling approximately 5.36 acres, more particularly described in Exhibit A and B. The council finds that 100% of the landowners comprising the LEAP Phase 34 annexation area have signed and filed a voluntary annexation petition with this council under Indiana law. The city Lebanon Advisory Plan Commission met on October 21, 2024 and forwarded docket 24-47 to this council with a favorable recommendation by a vote of seven to zero to assign the LEAP district zoning classification for the LEAP Phase 34 annexation area. In accordance with Indiana law, on this date, October 28, 2024, this council shall hold a public hearing. This council shall adopt a fiscal plan in accordance with Indiana law. The council has determined that this annexation satisfies the contiguity requirements under Indiana law and is more particularly described in Exhibit Indiana law and is more particularly described in Exhibit C. This council therefore finds as follows, the foregoing recitals are found to be accurate and incorporated by reference. The LEAP phase 34 annexation area described in Exhibits A and B is hereby declared annexed into and a part of the city of Lebanon. The LEAP phase 34 annexation area meets the contingency requirements under Indiana law. The LEAP annexation area is assigned Council District Two. Upon recommendation of the Plan Commission, the LEAP district zoning classification is assigned for the LEAP phase 34 annexation area. The council declares upon annexation that the LEAP phase 34 annexation area shall be a part of the water and wastewater LEAP rate districts as enacted in Ordinance 2024 dash 32. And again, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon adoption by this council and is required by Indiana law.
Thank you, Rob. At this time, I'll open the public hearing on Ordinance 2024 dash 29. If you have any public comment, please come forward, state your name for the record, and keep comments three minutes if possible. Yeah, seeing no sudden movement, I will close the public hearing on Ordinance 2024 dash 29. We will take that up at our next meeting at, you guessed it, November 12th at 7:15 p.m. All right, final one here, guys. Next will be Ordinance 2024 dash 30. Council consider LEAP Phase 35.
We'll complete our riveting reading of the annexation ordinances with LEAP Phase 35 annexation that you'll see represented on the map here. It is just on the south side of State Road 32 at North 200 West, and this is the Lebanon Business Park you see just to the east here. This is a two parcel annexation totaling a little over 77 acres. The addresses of the two parcels are 2051 and 2155 West State Road 32.
Thank you, Mayor. Council Ordinance 2024 dash 30 again concerns the LEAP phase 35 annexation area. Whereas the owners of approximately 77.73 acres of land located in unincorporated Boone County but contiguous to the city defined again as LEAP phase 35 annexation area have petition to have its land voluntary annexed into the city. The LEAP phase 35 annexation area consists of two parcels totaling approximately 77.73 acres of land owned by two landowners more particularly described in Exhibits A and B. Council finds that 100% of the landowners comprising this LEAP phase 35 annexation area have signed and filed a voluntary annexation petition with this council. City of Lebanon Advisory Plan Commission met on October 21, 2024 and forwarded docket 24 dash 48 to this council with a favorable recommendation by a vote of seven to zero to assign the LEAP district zoning classification for the LEAP phase 35 annexation area. In accordance with Indiana law, on this day, October 28, 2024, this council shall hold a public hearing. This council shall adopt the fiscal plan in accordance with Indiana law. This council has determined that this annexation satisfies the contingency requirements under Indiana law and is more particularly described in Exhibit C. Therefore, be it resolved, this council again finds as follows, the foregoing recitals are found to be accurate and incorporated by reference. The LEAP phase 35 annexation area more particularly described in Exhibits A and B is hereby declared and annexed into and a part of the city of Lebanon. LEAP phase 35 annexation area meets the contingency requirements under Indiana law. The LEAP annexation area is assigned Council District Two. Upon recommendation of the Plan Commission, the LEAP district zoning classification is assigned for the LEAP phase 35 annexation area. The council declares upon annexation, the LEAP phase 35 annexation area shall be a part of the water and wastewater LEAP rate district as enacted in Ordinance 2024 dash 32. And this ordinance shall be in full force and effect after adoption by this council and is required by Indiana law.
Thank you, Rob. And I open the final public hearing of tonight on Ordinance 2024 dash 30. If you have any public comment, please come forward, state your name for the record, and keep comments three minutes if possible. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing on Ordinance 2024 dash 30. We'll take that up at our next meeting on November 12th at 7:15 p.m. Council, thank you for all of that. Again, I know it's a lot of readings and a lot of ordinances, but we want to make sure we're doing it by the book, and it requires us to do it in that format. So, yeah, and also thank you, Rob, for reading off onto us, by the way. All right, next up will be Ordinance 2024 dash 31. This is a text amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance.
Right, I am going to take a few minutes to describe the background on this to you, primarily to give Mr. Shine a break before he has to read another ordinance. So I'll take a few minutes, and then I know Mr. Alexander has some background he wants to provide to you as well. So this is a discussion on a text amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance, primarily to Chapter Four, which is the LEAP section of our ordinance. A little bit of background here, so the LEAP district, the first standards that we established related to LEAP district were by a Plan Unit Development Ordinance, which is a process whereby you establish specific standards related to a specific area in the city, establish use restrictions, development standards for that area. That was adopted, I believe, a little over a year ago by this council. Since that time, we did a significant update to our Unified Development Ordinance. And in the ordinance which we adopted earlier this year in February, we took the text of that PUD ordinance and essentially copied it into a chapter of our Unified Development Ordinance. We wanted to codify that in the UDO. So again, it was essentially a verbatim copy of the text of that PUD ordinance, and we want it in the UDO. Since that time, then, obviously, the LEAP district has progressed. We've had a few leads that are looking at certain areas in the LEAP district, and a question came up related to the concept plan for the LEAP district. If they want to pull the screen up here, I'm going to show you. Here is the current concept plan for the LEAP district that identifies three different sub-districts within the overall acreage, and that would be the light purple, which is primarily focused on the northern end of the LEAP district, which is the advanced manufacturing sub-district. The yellow orangish color here in the middle would be the mixed-use sub-district, and then the dark purple here at the southern end, and it would be the mega site sub-district. And this was essentially a concept plan, not meant to be set in stone at the time. This was our best educated guess on what we thought would how the LEAP district might develop based on what was known at that time and the leads known at that time. Since that time, we've progressed, and some of those leads have gone away, and some new leads have come back. And the question came up, what if one of these sites, 17, 800, or 19, had a user that was only looking at a portion of the site, and it didn't really meet the definition or characteristics of a mega site, which mega sites are primarily 1,000 acres or larger, very significant developments? And so we now have a lead, which has been announced and is identified as the Eli Lilly Medicine Foundry, that's looking at 200 acres right here at the northeast corner of this Site 19. And the characteristics of their development, based on what we know currently, are that it would fit better within our event within the advanced manufacturing sub-district of the LEAP zoning district rather than the mega site. So as I was reviewing the text in the Unified Development Ordinance, it didn't it wasn't really clear how we would make modifications to this concept plan. And so what I talked with Mr. Alexander about is, one, we need to update this concept plan to what we know currently. But then also, we need to establish a process by which staff would review the project and determine, based on the characteristics of the project, the appropriate subjects to assign to it. And so that is what this this text amendment does that you're we're reviewing here tonight is, one, it takes this current concept plan and would amend it as part of the text amendment and adopt this concept plan you see here. The changes are primarily focused on this southern area of the LEAP district. It does now identify the Eli Lilly site at the northeast corner up here. But then what it does is it is it takes Site 17 and 18. It makes Site 18 a little bit larger and leaves it in the mega site subject district. Site 17 becomes smaller and is changed to the advanced manufacturing sub-district. Site 23 is the Eli Lilly Medicine Foundry site, and then we've assigned the advanced manufacturing sub-district to that site specifically. And then the remainder of this larger site, South of 32, has been divided up into smaller parcels, potential development parcels, and is now assigned to a hybrid mega site advanced manufacturing sub-district. And what the what's intended there is that once a project identifies a site in this area, we would look at those characteristics of that project and then assign either the mega site or advanced manufacturing subject to sub-district to it. The reason we did it a hybrid is because it's possible a user may decide that they want this entire acreage, which would which would be larger than 1,000 acres. It would make sense to assign it to the mega site sub-district. It's also possible that there would be multiple users that would carve up this site into smaller parcels, and it'd make more sense to to assign them to the advanced manufacturing sub-district. So we wanted that flexibility with this new hybrid district to be able to do that. So that's the first part of this amendment is to amend the concept plan, as you see reflected here. And the second part of it, as I mentioned before, was to establish the process by which staff would then review projects as they come in to identify the appropriate sub-district. And that's what you see amended in the text that's reflected in the ordinance that Rob will get to read here in a moment. And what that does then is it as the text, the section would identify the hybrid sub-district and the definition of that hybrid sub-district, it would amend the concept plan, include the language for the amended concept plan in the in the UDO text. And then the last two sections would be the establishment of the review process. This is in Section 4.14 of the UDO. It identifies a new item G that is the administrative review of the hybrid mega site advanced manufacturing sub-district classification. And I'll just quickly read this here. It says, "After receiving information from a petitioner related to a petition for development review, related to land located within this hybrid sub-district we just we just reviewed, based on project size, use, and other criteria set forth in the previous section of the ordinance, and based upon the mega site or advanced manufacturing sub-district descriptions, the zoning administrator shall ministerially designate the impacted parcel as being located in either the industrial mega site or industrial advanced manufacturing sub-district. The site shall then be subject to the design and development criteria and standards set forth under the designated sub-district. And any determination by the zoning editor or zoning administrator under this section shall be treated as an administrative decision, appealable to the BZA per Section 8.3 of the UDO. And so any administrative decision by our office needs to be appealable somewhere, and that that is typically the Board of Zoning Appeals." The final amendment of the text would be in Section 9.9, and this this section is the duties of the administrator of the department. And again, this adds an item 10 to that list of duties, which would be to determine the assignment of the sub-district classifications for the hybrid sub-district, as we have just explained here. So that is a brief overview of the text amendment to amend the concept plan and also create the administrative review of this new hybrid sub-district. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions if there are any now, before I turn over to Mr. Alexander.
So Ben, just to clarify, we're not necessarily creating a new standard.
Correct.
We're essentially creating, saying, hey, this area in blue could either be dark purple or it could be purple based on the project.
Yes.
So it's not it's not creating a new hybrid standard. It's just saying it's it could be either or, and once it gets determined, that's what we'll apply to it.
Yes, this changes this does nothing to change any of the standards that were previously established. This, as you just suggested, says it's going to be one or the other, and we're going to wait till we know the project before we assign the sub-district to it.
Further questions for Ben from council?
Again, name's Scott Alexander. I represent IEDC. I'm with Taft Law. Can we get that up, the map up again? Ah, there we go. Just a couple of things on why the colors and why aqua is here, dark purple is there. With respect to Site 23, that is designated as the Lilly Foundry area, Medicine Foundry area. And so we know what that site is. We know it's 200 acres, and therefore, there's no reason for it to be that that teal or aqua color because it makes sense for it to be advanced manufacturing. With respect to the site that's the dark purple, which is Site 18, we also are in advanced discussions with an end user. That's why that site is approximately 1,500 acres. So we are very confident that that will be a mega site, so there's no need to have it in that teal color that could go one way or another. So that explains kind of where we are with 23 and with 18. Now, when you go south of 32, if we were to combine with an end user 19 and 20, we're going to be over 1,000 acres. That would likely be the dark purple. That would likely be a mega site. On the other hand, if we have a company come in, just like right below the Lilly Medicine Foundry area under Site 23, that says, you know, we're going to be about 200 acres, then that would likely be the lighter purple, which would be advanced manufacturing. So I just wanted to kind of explain in practicality how this would work. No standard is changed. Those standards are about 800 pages in length in the PUD. They took about a year to develop. And then were obviously discussed quite a bit, and then enacted in May of last year with the PUD, and then that was incorporated into the UDO after that. So any questions about how this how this would work? It's really to provide flexibility for what we anticipated and Ben anticipated with respect to when you actually get in a defined end user in a defined area.
Questions for Scott from the council?
Okay.
Thank you. Scott. Rob, sorry. Read the ordinance, please.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Council. Ordinance 2024 dash 31 is an ordinance of this council amending Chapter Four of the Lebanon Unified Development Ordinance. Again, this is rather lengthy, and there's a synopsis in the beginning that this ordinance again creates a text amendment to Chapter Four of the Lebanon Unified Development Ordinance. This text amendment seeks to amend the concept plan and the boundaries of the LEAP district perimeter, again by designating approximately 200 acres of the property defined below as the Lilly Medicine Foundry areas being in the advanced manufacturing sub-district, and setting forth a method for ministerial determining the sub-district designations for the project areas located in hybrid industrial mega site, industrial advanced manufacturing area defined below, based upon specified criteria as both Ben and Scott described. So there are several pages of the wherashes. Again, you've had it. I don't think that I need to read this verbatim into the record. I know Ben highlighted most of those. So I thought the background again is is what Ben had touched based on. And so the whereas and the recitals are basically all the way up through to Section One, and they're incorporated by reference. Section Two talks about the applicability of the ordinance. Again, the development requirements for the real for the real estate located within the Lilly Medicine Foundry area. Again, Section Three discusses the definitions and the rules of construction. It talks about Section 3.2, the amended concept plan, which is attached as Exhibit D, that again both Ben and Scott highlighted. The development requirements again are discussed on that page as well. Section Four talks about the amended sub-district description, which is Section 4.3 of the UDO, and it shall be amended to include the hybrid IM slash IA sub-district description and classification. Again, that's the hybrid IM IA sub-district, which Ben read into. And Section Five discusses again the amended concept plan and the LEAP district perimeter. Section 4.4 of the UDO, again, you've seen Exhibit D, which is the amended concept plan. Section Six discusses the establishment again of the administrative review process for the hybrid IA IM sub-district, and again, the addition of Section 4.4, 4.14G to the UDO. And again, that shall this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its adoption by this council and is required by Indiana law.
Okay, thank you, Rob. Any further comments, discussion from council on that? Okay, any further public comment? Okay, then we're going to round our first reading. We'll take that up at our next meeting on, yep, you guessed it, November 12th, 7:15 p.m. All right, final item here is Resolution 2024 dash 23, which is establishment of an ERA or Economic Revitalization Area in Project LEAP. And this is coming from me, and I wanted to kind of highlight some things. Scott mentioned that we're moving forward kind of with a significant potential user out in LEAP, and so this is generally the area we're talking about in the ERA. Actually, Ben, do you have the map so I could show it up there for me? I think we call it Site 18, I believe, on the on the 18 or 19. Essentially, what what we're doing here tonight essentially is the first steps of establishing a TIF district. And what what I wanted to make very clear to council is that just because something is in LEAP, it doesn't necessarily guarantee any economic incentive is in LEAP, it doesn't necessarily guarantee any economic incentives with it being in LEAP, right? You know, LEAP is kind of the overall plan for it, but there aren't necessarily any incentives that come with that designation. What, what the state, the tools that are in the toolbox with LEAP are what's called the Innovation Development Districts or IDDs, right, which is what the Lilly is. And with those, it requires an investment of over $2 billion on the site for the state to declare it as an IDD, and that's where we have the minimum 12% share of the property taxes passed back to the city outside of our levy. There may be situations that arise based on the user that using an IDD, which is a state tool, isn't actually the best tool or what is best for the company or frankly for the city to do that, just based on different types of other state legislation that there are. In this situation, where with this user we're talking about, it's more, it's better for us to look at using a, frankly, a standard TIF district, kind of like we did in our business park. And so, that's why we're essentially here tonight to kind of talk about the beginning of creation of that TIF district and implement that for the city going forward. I'm going to have Rob read it, and then I can answer maybe any further questions you have about that as well. This was, do you have this map, Ben?
I do.
Can I give that to you?
It should, it should be the same as Site 18 on this map I pulled up.
Yeah, it just has the parcels though on it. A little more zoomed in. But, Rob, do you mind reading the resolution, please, for me?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Council. I guess the, the only thing I would add to clarify, so today or this evening, what this ordinance or Resolution 2024-23 is a resolution for this council designating certain areas an economic revitalization area. So, as part of the incentives that the mayor was talking about is, one, one step would be to designate an area as a TIF district or allocation area, and this is setting it up as an ERA or Economic Revitalization Area. It's one step, to the extent that tax abatements would be considered at a later date to set up that aspect of it. So, I'll just read this into the record pursuant to Indiana law, the city, by and through this council, acting in its capacity as the fiscal body of the city, is empowered with the ability to designate real property within its territory boundaries as an economic revitalization area or an ERA. The council wishes to encourage the development of approximately 1,435 acres of real property located within the LEAP district that is more particularly described in Exhibits A and B, and that's defined as the area. The council believes that its designation of the area as an ERA pursuant to the Act will assist in the city's goals of fostering new business within the LEAP district, increase and diversify the city's tax base, and promote the creation of high-paying job opportunities for the city residents. Areas located within the LEAP planned unit development will remain subject to all requirements set forth therein. The council's adoption of this Resolution 2024-23 is intended to serve as fulfillment of its declaratory resolution requirements as provided by Indiana Code, and the creation of an ERA for the area remains subject to the council's adoption of a subsequent confirmatory resolution. What that means is we have to come back before this council to adopt it at a later date after, in hold a public hearing. Therefore, be it resolved, this council finds as follows. Pursuant to Indiana law, this council declares that the area identified in Exhibit A heretofore is designated as an ERA pursuant to the Act. The designation of the area as an ERA shall not be limited by a designated time period and upon passage of the confirmatory resolution. All qualifying real and personal properties shall be eligible for deduction as allowed under the Act and is approved by this council. Any previous designations of an ERA by the city shall not impact or limit the area as an ERA and the property that can qualify for an abatement deduction as contemplated in this resolution. In accordance with this Act, this council shall cause to be published notice of adoption of this resolution. In accordance with the Act, this council shall cause to be filed copy of this resolution with each taxing unit that has authority to levy property taxes within the area, including in its filing, a copy of this notice required in paragraph two above, and a copy of any statement of benefits which may be filed with the city or the council in accordance with the Act. In accordance with the Act, this council shall cause to be filed a certified copy of this resolution with the Boone County Assessor, and this resolution shall be in full force and effect immediately upon its adoption. So, that's been read. Again, I just want to clarify, in case, I know we've had a lot of reading today, but we will have to come back before you to, if this resolution gets passed, we'll have a public hearing, and then we'll have what we call a confirmatory resolution that will, that will confirm and, again, establish the area.
And also want to clarify, again, this is not even talking about the actual negotiations with the company at all, right? This is essentially company agnostic, right? This is simply declaring the area, just like we did with the Lebanon Business Park back in the 90s. We drew a border and said, this is an ERA, essentially, right? And that's, and that's kind of what we're doing with this site. So, any questions, comments from council? Go ahead, Scott, if you wanted to come up to.
Rob, you might clarify on the map. There were like three or four of those parcels that are in the process of being annexed. So, that's why the ones on the right side, the smaller ones, those are in the process of being annexed. So, they're not officially, my understanding, in the ERA, because they're not officially in the city until November 12th, assuming that the council votes that way. So, that's why those smaller parcels are kind of carved out at this time, because they're not officially in the city yet. Did I get that right?
Yeah.
All right.
And that's accurate. And one of the things we talked about beforehand is at least showing it on the map that way, and assuming that these could get passed, those parcels would come into the city, we, we would come back at a later time to amend and include those.
Yeah. So, to clarify, the green parcels are not in the ERA. It's strictly the, the lighter pink there.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any further discussion, questions, comments? Public comment concerning this? Okay. Got to ask, you know. With that, would entertain a motion concerning Resolution 2024-23?
I'll make the motion, then we approve Resolution 2024-23.
Motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from John. All fair, so aye?
Aye.
Disposed? Resolution is adopted unanimously. Thank you, council. All right. That concludes what I have for new business and from council. Okay. Move on to claims. We're entertaining motion concerning the claims. Motion to adjourn. Are there a second?
Second.
Second from Rob. All fair, so aye?
Aye.
Disposed? Okay. Any announcements or discussion?
I have one thing I'd like to add tonight. Reference the budget we just did. I'd like to thank the Lebanon Clerk's Office as well, City Clerk's Office. With all the changes and things back and forth, the meetings and things like that, I think they did a great job. We appreciate all that they did. I know how stressful it was trying to crunch those numbers and then come back and get new numbers brought to them a different day, and it took a while to get to the, where we needed to be, and I'd just like to thank all their time and effort that they did.
Well said. Thank you. No announcements or discussion? Okay. Keith, I think we're in the fourth inning, so there should be okay?
What it is.
I think so. Entertaining motion to adjourn?
Depends on who's ahead.
Uh, let's see.
Zero, zero.
Uh, three, nothing Dodgers right now.
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Sierra. All fair, so aye?
Aye.
Disposed? All right. Our next city council meeting will be again Tuesday, November 12th. We are delayed today because of Veterans Day. That'll be at 7:15 p.m. We are adjourned. Have a great night.